Good morning. I'll call to order the May 17th, 2016 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting, and we will start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
Our pleasure, Major. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will now read the meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, May 17th, 2016. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. However, please note, the board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. When you speak, clearly state your name for the record, and be aware there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. Please place all cell phones in silent mode. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. This is a group of items that are all to be considered, thank you, in one motion, but we're happy to pull any for discussion if anyone from the public would like that, or any of my colleagues. But I do have to note that we will be pulling Item 14A and 15B. 14A is an ordinance adopting a tentative map, and the tentative map included in the packet was not accurate, but the board members have the appropriate document in front of them. And I've forgotten what 15B was.
Consent documents, the guidelines.
The guidelines. Okay, so, and we have appropriate document on the ideas for the board members also. Thank you. So with those two items, are there anyone, any other consent agenda items that people would like pulled?
Yes, Michael Garabedian, Friends of the North Fork. Item 15D, Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any others? Colleagues, have any? Okay, with those three items then pulled, what's the pleasure of the board? Moved and seconded to approve the consent items, with the three items currently off. Roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes. Excuse me. So we'll next take up Item 14A. And I'm sure someone's going to present that for us.
Good morning, Chair Wiegand and members of the board. I'm Linda Patterson. I'm, excuse me? Oh, am I ahead?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Good morning, board members and Chairman Rick Eri with the Community Development Resource Agency. We had some minor modifications to the attachment to the board memo today. It's the one, the one that you have before you now is the one that was presented to you two weeks ago. And Leslie can explain some of the minor edits that were included in today's board memo.
That's right.
Yes, Leslie, after finishing our survey, just some minor edits to the, to the language. Just taking out a reference to the subdivision map act in item, or section number C. We're still aligning county code with the map act, whereas county code presently allows for three one-year extensions of time, and we're trying to align it with the map act, which allows six. And those are proposed in two-year increments. So we have a small snafu with the staff report, the one unfortunately that was attached to. Today's staff report was a slightly older version.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Anyone from the public wish to address this item? Pleasure of the board. Moved and seconded to approve Item 14A. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 15B, which is the North Lake Tahoe Economic Development, Economic Incentive Program guideline.
My name's Chairman, members of the board, Chris Perry, Placer County Executive Office, Tahoe. Very minor changes from what was originally in your packet. Exhibit B, Section 1, just the title was changed to say, "Further enhances implementation of the area plan and builds upon community vision." It was just one of those proving things we forgot to do when we sent it in last time, but we made sure this version actually had that in there. The other is in Section 4.0, it should have said County Executive Office, Tahoe. It previously had said Tahoe County Executive Office, just a minor clarification to make sure that we weren't implying there was indeed a Tahoe County in California. So, those were the two changes.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from board members? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the board.
Oh, I think you need to speak. Hello? Tahoe?
Oh, Ellie, I apologize.
It's okay.
We have comments from Tahoe, so, yes.
Yes, I just have a quick comment. I'm not sure why we use the words qualitative requirement and then go for a case-by-case exception for the smaller projects. And I'll read the paragraph I'm referring to. The minimum score required to participate in a program is a target number of 120 out of possible 170 due to scoring criteria. And I won't read the whole thing, but I'm not sure why we are reducing the scoring for smaller projects, and I think it really should have further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you please state your name for the record? I think we didn't get that.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident.
Thank you. Want to address the question?
Sure. The idea that we can score these smaller projects, they won't reach that 120 minimum threshold. That's why we're going to use the same scoring rubric without necessarily scoring them, giving them points. That's why it says qualitative, because had we gone, I mean, if you're a small project, you only need 10 T.A.U.s, you're not going to be able to meet all these criteria, you're not going to be able to create enough jobs from that project, you're not going to have enough T.O.T. to justify gaining over that 120 threshold. The 120 threshold, the program is geared towards, you know, 75% of the program is geared towards catalyst lodging projects. That's the whole intent of the EPS documents that came out last year. So, but we wanted to make sure that 25% of the T.A.U. assets were reserved for smaller lodging projects inside and outside town centers, that we weren't excluding anyone. That was kind of the point of this. It wasn't necessarily to do anything else. So, that's why we did that. Those projects, if you were a small project, you just wouldn't meet that 120 threshold. So we leave discretion with your board to decide whether or not a project is worthy of getting something as small as maybe five or 10 T.A.U.s.
Questions, comments? Anyone else from the public?
I had a question. Did we give any consideration to just creating a scoring system for the projects that would require more T.A.U.s and a different scoring process for those smaller projects?
No, we didn't consider a secondary, you know, scoring tier, if you will. We, I mean, these projects are going to come in, I mean, if you're going to come in, you're going to be required to do basic things anyways. If you don't have best management practices in place for stormwater, you're going to have to do those if you're doing any type of update. If you're going to have 10 new units, you're going to get them. So they're going to be doing, you know, a minimum amount of work anyways, particularly on the environmental side. They're going to have to comport with their new area plan. We figured the benefits that come from that were enough for the community, that we didn't necessarily need to create a whole new scoring system just for these smaller projects. And again, we're talking, you know, it's 25% of the T.A.U. program assets in any given year, so, you know, we can just guess on how many T.A.U.s we might have at the county at any point in time. But it's, it's not a catalyst size, so we didn't feel necessary to give it a numerical score.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? What's the pleasure of the board?
Moved and seconded to approve the item.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And last but not least, Item 15D was just requested to be pulled. So who's going to present? Local multi-hazard mitigation plan update. John?
Good morning, Chairman and board members. My name's John McElhany with Placer County Office of Emergency Services. Understand that Mr. Garabedian pulled the item. Did you want to speak, have him speak first, or do you want me to talk about the plan?
Why don't you give a brief overview first, as if it were a normal department item, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, some of the key things of the local hazard mitigation plan. It's really a comprehensive, all-county plan, and it really postures and prepares us for, and positions us for grant funding in the event of a large disaster. It also has multiple projects in it that are essentially mitigation projects. The development of the plan began essentially early last year. We've had several meetings on the plan. It's gone through multiple phases. We've had a consultant that's been working with us, a consultant's Foster Morrison. She is, her firm essentially did the first plan in 2005. There's a requirement for that to go through Cal OES approval, and then also FEMA approval. The same consultant did the second plan in 2010, and these plans are on a five-year update cycle essentially. Same consultant was selected in 2010, went through the same process with a FEMA approval and a Cal OES approval, and we're now in 2015 slash, well, 2016, and we're in the process of going through that same approval as well. The only particular piece that's different is we've identified three projects that we've got some potential grant funding that we're going after. And the process of actually approving or getting in the queue and being ready to actually hopefully get that grant funding requires Cal OES approval, FEMA approval, which both those two items are in the works as I speak. And then the other thing is also to have the Board of Supervisors approve the plan. So that's just a quick overview of what the plan does. There's several improvements that I can go through if you'd like me to for the 2015-16 plan.
No, not at this point. Thanks, John.
You're welcome, sir.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
Good morning, Michael Garabedian, Friends of the North Fork. As we corresponded with the county OES in January, late, about third week of January, late January, we are concerned that this, the FEMA can't approve this because it does not have, as far as we can tell, a mitigation plan to deal with development in the wildland urban interface. The, the plan has to identify the hazards, and it's mandated by the FEMA law to mitigate, propose mitigation efforts for that problem. Now, the drought, the fuel buildup, there are various problems that contribute to the, to the fire hazard and problems we are experiencing, but none of those are greater, I mean, among those, another leg of the stool is willy-nilly development in the wildland urban interface. There's a need to, to manage that and do it so that it's located and takes into account fire behavior, topography, and that kind of thing, which has not been a shining thing that this county has, has done with its development. So this is an opportunity to specify in the plan mitigation proposals for that that could be funded. And that, that's the whole point, is to be able to fund mitigation efforts, to fund development of mechanisms to manage development in the wildland urban interface. I know that the board adopted a resolution at this last meeting about, about the, that mistakenly, really, says that fire creates a problem for development in the wildland urban interface. It's just the other way around. Development in the wildland interface creates the problem for when fire comes along in these ultra-hazardous areas, and it's a problem for the people who live in these new developments, the people who have to fight the fires for the rest of the community. So that's our concern, that we look ahead and use this plan to, to address those concerns. And amongst the 112 or 135, the two different numbers of mitigation efforts proposed, we don't see that clearly specified here. We also mentioned that our concern about, for the ultra-hazardous railroad corridor from Secret Town to Iron Point, that this area, which has been identified and recognized as a corridor likely to have derailments, we think that's another area where the plan should look forward and to be able to get grants or other proposals to do things to keep cars from leaving the track and going into the canyon. There was, there has been mitigation after the Dunsborough incident in the early 1990s, and that's the kind of thing we hope the county would be saying we should be doing here. So those are our broad concerns that we brought to the attention and hopefully that, you know, that will be addressed. And we're concerned that it just, it doesn't meet the requirements. It's, it's like developing in the, it's like-
If you could wrap up your comment.
Okay. Developing in the face of proposed fire is the same thing as developing in the flood zone. It should be managed and regulated.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this item? Any other questions from board members?
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded to approve Item 15D. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. So we will now move on to public comment. This is a time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we can take no action today. Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Marcel Schaefer, and I'm the Executive Director for Acres of Hope. So first of all, good morning, Chair Wiegand, and good morning, members of the board. My purpose here today is to offer a word of gratitude. Acres of Hope just celebrated its 10th anniversary, and the Board of Supervisors has been very supportive of Acres of Hope for all of these years. And I especially want to offer a word of gratitude to Supervisors Montgomery and Holmes, who were kind enough to co-chair our recent 10th anniversary celebration fundraiser. $50,000 was raised to support the families who live at Acres of Hope with your assistance, and so I thank you for that from myself, and my staff, and my board, and the families that we care for. For those of you that might be less familiar with Acres of Hope, we are not a shelter, we are a long-term residential life-change center for homeless women with children. We have 10 family cottages. When families come to Acres of Hope, they are no longer homeless because they get four walls, a front door, and a key, a place to call home, where they can live for up to two years while they engage in the life-change program so they can become self-sustaining. So thank you for your support for helping these families change their lives.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Wiegand, members of the board. My name is Jennifer Horn. I'm the Deputy District Director for Congressman Doug LaMalfa. Christine Rydel is also here this morning, representing Senator Jim Nielsen, and she will be reading key points from a letter this morning on behalf of Congressman LaMalfa, Senator Nielsen, and Assemblyman Bigelow to the board. We are here today to relay their concerns regarding the proposed marijuana cultivation ordinance. There has been significant outreach from Placer County constituents to our offices expressing their great concern about the potential direction the county is heading. We hope the board weighs heavily the well-founded opinions and expertise of your law enforcement leaders, as well as the concerns of local education leaders. The formal letter will be sent to the board this week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, and good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm Greg Higwar, manager of the Placer County Fair Association. I'm also here with David Henry and Ryan Ronco, my board president and a director. We're here today just to mention that the fair will be June 23rd through the 26th, and our sincere appreciation to the Board of Supervisors and county staff, who have just been incredible. Facility services, maintenance, park and recs, it just goes down the line. Oh, the audit office. Alan said, Andy Skisk, just incredible help. And we were just wanting to come up, thank the Board of Supervisors for their help. We have a number of projects going on at this time at the fairgrounds. We're gearing up for the fair. We accept, we expect to have a really, really good fair this year. We also have established really, really good relationships with the city of Roseville. And with that being said, did you have anything you'd like to say, Dan?
Well, I too want to thank the board for all your assistance. It's been a hectic last two years in dealing with the fair. I think the, represent the board, we are on, the Board of Art Board of Directors, we're on the right track. We're seeing a lot of progress with the fair, and we hope to see you all at the fair this year.
Thank you.
And with my minute and 38 seconds, the fair, in the California fair industry, the highest award that we can give is the Blue Ribbon Award. And we'd like to present this through Western Fairs Association to the Board of Supervisors 2015, which is where we all kind of got on board with this. And could we get a picture?
Thank you, guys.
I never pass up a picture.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know who should take this.
I'm going to give it to the clerk.
Okay, I'll put it back in there.
Thank you.
And thank you guys again, very much.
And thank you for all your support. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Christina, Ellie, I see you, so you, you're not being ignored. She's on camera up in Tahoe, but go ahead, Christine.
Good morning, Christine Rydel with Senator Nielsen's office. We would like to take this opportunity to voice our concerns over the proposed marijuana cultivation ordinance. Placer County offers its residents and visitors a rich and diverse array of places to live, recreate, shop, and work, receive medical care, and select educational choices for children from preschool through college. The quality of life our residents enjoy in Placer County is why many call it home. A lax and broad marijuana ordinance that is contrary to federal law places these community assets and values in peril. As federal and state representatives of large Northern California districts, including Placer County, we have seen the results of permissive marijuana cultivation ordinances, vast increases in criminal activity, greater youth access to marijuana, and environmental degradation and pollution. This lucrative cash-only business attracts illegal sales, burglary, robbery, and the manufacturing of marijuana derivatives like honey oil, the concentrated powerful drug that is very dangerous to youth. There is no disputing the evidence that crime rates go up when the business of growing marijuana is involved. No amount of fees, taxation, or permitting will mitigate the dangers this industry will bring to our communities. There is no sum of money that can ensure our safe neighborhoods, schools, businesses, and communities. According to the county's homepage, Placer County is special with its breathtaking scenery, rich history, and year-round recreation. You see why more than 360,000 people call Placer County home. We would encourage you to take a very hard look beyond the revenue you believe you would receive for this very dangerous enterprise. The very way of life for the citizens in Placer County hangs in the balance. We urge the board to consider to create a strict ordinance that has a complete ban on all outdoor cultivation, bans indoor commercial cultivation, dispensaries, distribution, testing, processing, and delivery. If your board has determined that some form of cultivation is necessary, consider implementing policies similar to neighboring counties. Enacting a land-use ordinance allowing for qualified patients and caregivers to only conduct limited indoor cultivation in a permanent structure detached from any residence would be appropriate. Due to the concerns of youth access and exposure to marijuana, we encourage any indoor marijuana cultivation to be at least one mile away from any school, church, childcare center, park, school, evacuation site, or youth-oriented facility. Thank you for your consideration on this important issue. We hope that current and future residents of Placer County can continue to expect the exemplary quality of life that the county has become known for. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address something not on the agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Wiegand, members of the board. I'd like to offer some counterpoint to the arguments against the county's effort to demonstrate some leadership on the cannabis issue.
And before you do-
I'm sorry, yes.
Just for the benefit of the public and people in the audience, this item will be on the board's agenda, not today, but on June 21st, and we will have a full and ample opportunity for all and every comment. So if you could keep that in mind, so we could move up to the day's agenda.
Excellent. Thank you, yes. So I have attended, and I don't know if I mentioned Sam Toll from Loomis, California, 30-year resident. So I have attended the meetings that were held in the City Councils of Roseville and Auburn, and I'd like to thank Becky and Josh, who took a lot of heat on your behalf from local law enforcement. They, the law enforcement folks are offering public safety as their number-one concern, which obviously is their stead. As a person who's represented the Libertarian Party and gone to every high school in South Placer County, talking with kids about different issues, I can assure you that if there was a cultivation and dispensary outside the, or across the street from every high school in South Placer County, it would be physically impossible for more marijuana to be available on campus. And the reason for that is because of the black market. There's only two people really that benefit, or two groups of people that benefit from the black market, a complete ban on, on this activity. One is the cops, and one are the robbers. The reason that these illicit substances, or should say a contributing factor to the reason these illicit substances are so readily available, is because nobody's checking their ID. Nobody is, you know, regulating, no one is, is offering a pathway that provides reasonable access to, to these kinds of substances. I know that Placer County is, is asking for about $20 million for Measure C. Is that right? Is about $20 million that they're looking for, Measure C?
High school district.
Pardon me?
That's a high school district.
Right, right. Oh, I'm sorry. So, so, one thing to consider, Josh and Becky had mentioned that there were 4,000 illicit grows here in South Placer County. Most of these people are otherwise law-abiding, tax-paying citizens, and they simply want to come out into the light and, and otherwise participate in illegal activity. I would argue that if you followed the lead of Calaveras County, who is suggesting a $5,000 licensing fee on some of these operations, that you'd be able to generate enough money to pay for the school renovations in one easy fell swoop. Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address something not on the agenda?
Don't forget Ellie.
And, yes, I haven't forgotten you, Ellie. Man, I have people here reminding me, so I won't forget you.
Good morning, Chairman Wiegand, honorable board members. My name is Rex Marx, and I am the Chief of Police for the City of Lincoln. Let me begin, first of all, by just expressing my appreciation to all of you for the opportunity to share some thoughts and concerns related to the prospects of legalizing and permitting the ordinance on marijuana cultivation dispensing here in the county. As this board is already well-aware, this issue is highly controversial for a number of reasons, specifically those that are potential risks to public safety, public health, and our environment at large. In the interest of time, I'd like to just highlight three specific points that I hope you will consider before moving forward on this issue in the coming months. First, in November of 2014, the City of Lincoln amended its ordinance addressing medical marijuana to reflect a complete ban on all cultivation and dispensing within the city limits. Among the concerns that prompted this action was a realization and a fear that an increased presence and access to marijuana would undoubtedly contribute to increased use, and the potential for increased incidence of traffic offenses wherein the drivers are operating under the influence of marijuana. This fear is supported by the 2015 Annual Report of the California DUI Management Information Systems Report, which documented a 2.4% increase in alcohol-involved crash fatalities in 2013 as compared to a 9% increase the same year in drug-involved fatality crashes. Of the total crash fatalities reported in 2013, 38.6 involved alcohol, while 39% involved drugs. The National Institute on Drug Abuse reported in 2014 that nearly 1 in 6 high school seniors reported driving under the influence of an illicit drug, while 1 in 4 reported having been a passenger of a driver under the influence. Most disturbing was the finding that 23.4% of students surveyed drove after using marijuana. The institute also found that, and I quote, "After alcohol, marijuana is the drug most often linked to drugged driving." In Washington State, for example, where voters legalized recreational use of marijuana in 2012, traffic fatalities increased by 122% between 2010 and 2014. And these were incidents that involved active levels- involved active levels of THC in the bloodstreams of the drivers. Secondly, we have also heard the phrase gateway drug. While there's remain, remains an ongoing debate as to the legitimacy of whether users of alcohol, tobacco, or marijuana will increasingly use hard drugs such as heroin, methamphetamine, or cocaine, the fact remains that early exposure and use of these substances does affect cognitive development and the ability to effectively use good judgment when confronting, confronted with decision-making efforts such as operating a motor vehicle. The final concern for your consideration is that of proposed revenue and taxation that has been mentioned but not detailed yet in the county staff's presentation on this issue. I believe the reason it has not been addressed is because federal law does in fact prohibit financial institutions from offering banking services to marijuana-related businesses as addressed in the Controlled Substance Act. In closing, I remind the board that cities of Auburn, Lincoln, and Rockland in Roseville already have ordinances in place prohibiting the cultivation and dispensing. We encourage the board to consider this when making their decision in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name.
Good morning, my name is Kirsten Monk, I am a school nurse with Roseville City School District, and I'm here on behalf of the Placer County Community and School Nurses Network. I'd like to read a letter of petition signed by twenty-seven of our members in regards to the immunization and medical clinics. Dear members of the board, it has come to our attention that the Board of Supervisors is considering a proposal to further limit and/or shut down the Placer County Immunization and Medical Clinic in Auburn. We, the nurses of Placer County Community and School Nurses Network, are gravely concerned about how such a proposal will impact some of the most vulnerable members of our community. Currently, there are very few resources available to low-income families for accessing low-cost immunizations and healthcare. As school nurses, we work with many families for whom the cost of immunizations is prohibitive, especially for those who are uninsured or underinsured. This issue, along with the shortage of healthcare providers in our area accepting new Medi-Cal patients, makes the county clinics the only option for many children in need of healthcare and immunizations. Over the years, we've watched as our community clinics have faced increasing cutbacks, resulting in dramatically reduced hours and the eventual closure of the Roseville Clinic. Families in need of low-cost health services who often lack reliable transportation now must make arrangements to travel to Auburn for immunizations and clinic appointments. Due to the extremely limited hours of the only low-cost immunization clinic currently available in Auburn every first and third Friday of the month, a child excluded from school because they lack immunizations required by law for school attendance could miss up to two weeks of school, just waiting for an available clinic date. We believe that every child deserves access to education and healthcare, and the current system is not adequately meeting those needs. We should be looking to expand options for healthcare for low-income families, not further restrict them. We understand that budgetary and fiscal considerations are always at stake in these types of decisions, but we hope you will weigh those considerations carefully against the impact of these decisions on the future of the children in our community. Thank you for your consideration of our concerns and for your service to our community.
Thank you. Ellie, would you like to comment now, please?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to comment in Tahoe, good morning, Chair and Board Members Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. I'm requesting that you, as a board, request staff to reevaluate the proposed approval meetings for the Marthis Valley West Parcel Specific Plan. What's the hurry? At the recent May twelfth NITREC Council meeting, it was requested that the June ninth Planning Commission meeting be postponed to a further date, and the county responded that they could confirm the recommendation, but staff would ultimately probably go forward with the June ninth meeting. The NITREC meeting was held only nine days after the FEIR was released, that's just not enough time for them to make a credible recommendation on a very contentious project. I understand applicants of all projects are anxious to move forward, but that doesn't mean the approval process should be steamrolled. Marthis Valley West was released May third, there are three versions of the specific plan for people like me that compare all the changes, and that was released also in May of two thousand and sixteen. At the Squaw Valley Mackett, it was announced that the Planning Commission would hear that project on June twenty-third. That FEIR was released on April seventh. Why not get that one through the approval cycle before pushing this one? Recently, Tom Moore's of Sierra Watch stated, "It's important for us to get these dates right in order to ensure that we're engaging expertise in the correct timeframe, for example, responding to the Squaw Valley FEIR at Planning Commissions, and so we can effectively encourage citizen involvement in the public planning process." Is the county considering staggering any of the decision-making processes for these project plans, referring to Squaw, Marthis Valley, and they asked about the Tahoe Basin Area Plan? It seems impossible that such a stacked and accelerated calendar can allow for meaningful citizen involvement and agency engagement in this public process, not to mention placing an unreasonable burden on county staff, the capacity of decision-makers to do this thoroughly. I'd like to also add that the North Star Master Plan is probably going to see the light of day now that the appeals have been dropped. I'll close with my introduction request. I am requesting that you, as a board, have staff reevaluate the proposed approval meetings for the Marthis Valley West process. Also, at the NITREC meeting, it was asked that the presentation that was given that date be posted on the net, I know it's only been a few, few days since that meeting, but that's not done, and I look forward to seeing you in July and October in your Tahoe meetings, and maybe a couple extra special meetings, because each project deserves your attention on an individual basis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Now's the time for Board Member Committee Reports, are there any? Jennifer?
This is not a committee report, per se, but I did want to actually, in light of some of the comments, bring my board up to speed. We did hold two municipal advisory council meetings this last week, one on Saturday, a special meeting Saturday afternoon at Squaw Valley, we had about three hundred people show up, it was a terrific turnout, a lot of very good input, and we got some very clear direction from the municipal advisory council. To their, their advisory recommendation to us was that, or actually to the Planning Commission and thence to us, would be to reject the project as proposed, but they were open to the fifty percent reduced density alternative. So really, just an update on that community meeting and where that ended up. We also had a NITREC meeting on the Marthis Valley West project, and that, unfortunately, we didn't get as clear a direction out of that meeting, but we did get direction to staff that I know staff is taking seriously and is gonna consider, so just wanted to let you know that that public process is moving along. I personally believe that a Saturday afternoon in May meeting with three hundred people is a pretty darn good public turnout, so just keeping you posted, thank you.
Seeing no one else, we will now take up our nine-fifteen timed item, which is a commendation to volunteer fire Captain Warren Bostic, and so Warren, if you'd come up to the podium, please. John, are you gonna kick this off?
Only just to turn it over to you, sir.
Mission accomplished, thank you. So, I'm going to read this commendation, Warren, and then I'm gonna come down and present it to you and give you a chance to do whatever you like after that, as long as you behave yourself reasonably, because we have deputy sheriffs in the out room here. So, whereas Captain Bostic has served with valor, honor, professionalism, and unrivaled devotion to his community and his selfless efforts over decades, whereas Captain Bostic earned the Board of Supervisors commemorative coin honoring his incredible volunteer commitment and service in two thousand and eight, whereas Captain Bostic earned eight out of ten Volunteer Firefighter Officer Awards, an award created to honor his incredible volunteer commitment, whereas Captain Bostic was giving, driving, was the driving force behind the construction, management, operation, and maintenance of Page Volunteer Fire Station for thirty-five years, whereas Warren was completely, completely disregarding his own safety, maneuvered his engine to effect a daring rescue of a young mother and her two young daughters from raging floodwaters that almost certainly would have resulted in three drowning deaths, an act of bravery broadcast live on national television for which he and his team earned a certificate of recognition from California State Senator Tim Leslie, whereas Captain Bostic personally responded to over thirty-five-hundred incidents during his illustrious career, including service on two California fire strike teams, serving as incident commander on the Glanning Fire, car crashes, train derailments, airport fires, and multiple other incidents over a lifetime of selfless community service. Therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was fully passed by the Board of Supervisors today. And a personal comment before I come down, I know that in all of your other districts, you never have any political issues that relate to fire or misunderstandings or miscommunication, but in my district, it hasn't happened very often, but from time to time, we have had a few. Warren has always been the go-to guy to get really good information, to help resolve delicate issues, been incredibly committed to providing really quality, on-the-ground, people-based service, and in addition to that, has been a great personal friend to me over all these years, even when we've had disagreements, some of which have risen to a public conversation, but Warren, tremendous respect and personal gratitude for all of your commitment over these years.
My turn. Into the microphone?
Yep.
Oh goodness. Well, it's been a wild ride. In nineteen eighty-one, I never imagined that it would end up to be this, and it was the, the Board of Supervisors in nineteen eighty-one, specifically Alex Ferrara, who agreed that there needed to be some fire coverage service in the Western Placer area. And Page Station was the first station built in what is now an eleven-million-dollar operation called Placer County Fire. Now, the state doesn't mandate that the counties provide fire service, thank you, Robert, I learned that last night, and so I think the county, the citizens of Placer County should be deeply indebted to the county for ensuring the safety of their constituents. I've worked with a lot of great people, a lot of good leaders, a lot of mentors over the years, I didn't get to where I am by myself. I was able to use resources and the ability and intelligence of my coworkers and my leaders to learn, to evolve into what has been a great time in my life. As always, I didn't do this alone, I have a charming, loving wife and family, my wife is here today, and a family of four that were in full support of what I did after I retired from Pacific Bell in nineteen ninety-one. So I really never did retire from that job, and I'm really not sure I'm gonna retire from this job. There may be those that are closing the door behind me with a swift kick, honey, but thank you so much for this honor, and thank you so much, so much for the support from the county and the Board of Supervisors, I'll be forever grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren.
Is there a camera still here? I would love to have a picture with the unit chief of Placer, George Morris, and Assistant Chief Scott Lindgren. Chief, thank you for your support.
Of course. I can, I can go ahead, John. I can, just kidding. It's now my pleasure to also present a commendation to Battalion Chief Chris Paulus for thirty-eight years' career with Placer County Fire, CAL FIRE and Placer County Fire Department. So, whereas Chief Paulus began his career with CAL FIRE in the Youth Forest or Protection Program in the Butte Unit of CAL FIRE in June of nineteen seventy-eight, then joined the Nevada Yuba Placer Unit as a seasonal firefighter in nineteen eighty, whereas Chief Paulus quickly recognized for all of his all-around superb skills as a firefighter, was rapidly, rapidly promoted through the ranks from the fire apparatus engineer to fire captain, and served in numerous units throughout California, whereas on May fourteenth, two thousand and seven, Chief Paulus was promoted to Battalion Chief in the Nevada Yuba Placer Unit, where he originally began his career as a firefighter, and from day one, led by example on thousands of calls for service, including countless wildland fires, saving numerous communities in Placer County, and statewide positively impacting and educating his communities with his tireless work on wildland fire preparedness, fire-safe councils, forest and fire management. Whereas for thirty-eight years, Chief Paulus exemplified consistent, positive, and proactive leadership and quiet professionalism, improving the lives and protecting the homes, businesses, and livelihoods of countless residents and visitors of the mountain communities of Dutch Flat, Alta, Alpine Meadow, Secret Town, Colfax, Iowa Hill, Weimar, Applegate, Placer Hills, and Meadow Vista. Therefore, it be resolved that this commendation was duly presented today to Chief Chris Paulus. Thank you, John. Now your turn.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank the Chair and Board Supervisor Montgomery for this honor. It's been my honor to serve in Placer County for the last eight and a half, almost nine years, the residents of this county, in this great state of California. It's very humbling, I'm not great at public speaking, I'm kind of a private person. When I entered the fire service, I met Warren Bostic in eighty-one at Page Station under construction, and Mark Lemire and Mick McQ, and it's been a privilege to serve such folks here. With that said, as I move off into retirement, I know that Placer County is now my home, I'm deeply concerned with the way the county goes, as Chairman Montgomery knows, and again, my great appreciation to the board, but mainly to the public for my service and performance of my duties. If I may get a photo with my chiefs and then-
And before you're allowed to leave, I, I have some personal comments, since we did work together for the last seven and a half years. You say that you're not a very good public speaker. You are an incredible public speaker. I, I have to say, Chief Paulus would come to our municipal advisory councils and give the most comprehensive and most thorough presentations on what was going on, not just with CAL FIRE, but with all fire in the area, because he is an incredible community member, he's so connected to folks in the area, and whether it was, you know, writing a letter in support of an emergency exit at the Cape Horn exit on I-80, or keeping me up to date on the robbers' fire, or any of the other multitude of fires that we had in the area, Chris was always first and foremost, an incredible source of information, not just for me, but for his communities. I saw him at so many fire meetings, surrounded by a throng of people who recognized him and knew that if the information they got from him, if they got information from him, it was gonna be correct, it was gonna be right, it was gonna be reliable, and that is just such an incredible asset to us. But I want to mention that something that, that we have been working on, really just in the last couple of years, but it is really a very serious and concerning emerging issue, and that is insurance for homeowners and for business owners in, in the wildland, and not just the wildland, people in Auburn are seeing this as well, and, and I, I hope that Chris will continue to work with us at the county on some legislative changes, maybe some changes to the way the State Office of Insurance does business. If, if we don't step up as a county, and, and all of us, whether it's our CRC, or through CSAC, or CAL FIRE, and address some of these emerging issues with homeowners losing insurance because of the, the fire risk, we're gonna see a huge economic impact, not just in Placer County, but throughout the forested areas of California, and Chris has been an absolute leader on this, he's come up with an incredible plan that we hope the State Insurance Office is actually looking at and considering, but I'm begging you, stay with us, help us bring this to fruition. to the way the State Office of Insurance does business. If we don't step up as a county and all of us, whether it's our CRC, or through CSAC, or Cal Fire, and address some of these emerging issues with homeowners losing insurance because of the fire risk, we're going to see a huge economic impact, not just in Placer County, but throughout the forested areas of California. And Chris has been an absolute leader on this. He's come up with an incredible plan that we hope the State Insurance Office is actually looking at and considering. But I'm begging you, stay with us. Help us bring this to fruition, because we've got issues facing us. And it's only through the help of people like you that we're going to be able to get our job done. So, thank you personally, from the bottom of my heart, for everything that you've done. I miss you already, and it's just always a delight when I do get to see you. So, thank you for coming out today, and congratulations.
Thanks, Supervisor Montgomery. Yes, I am at your disposal along with the board on that issue.
Great. Thank you. And now you may have your photo. I'm sorry.
And if I may indulge the board for my son and my newly acquired daughter-in-law, the Office of Strategic Class, Devin Paulus, please come up here for a photo.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll take up our 9:25 timed item, Health and Human Services, which is a proclamation promoting May as our Mental Health Matters Month in Placer County. Maureen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Maureen Baum with the Adult System of Care. Today, we are asking you to approve a proclamation to promote mental health awareness by proclaiming May 2016 as Mental Health Matters Month in Placer County. Mental health challenges really affect a lot of us. One in four will have a mental health challenge sometime in our lifetime. So, that means these diseases are not uncommon. And yet, we still have a lot of stigma around mental illness. Stigma keeps people from reaching out and getting help, and it keeps people from getting the support they need. In Placer, we want to reduce stigma about mental health challenges, and we want to eliminate suicides. Our campaign is designed to save lives. This year's theme, Life with a Mental Illness, is a call to action to share what life with a mental illness feels like to someone going through it. Last year, the focus was on the campaign, you probably remember, helping individuals understand where they were in their mental health symptoms before stage four, liking it to a cancer, stage four. And that when people get help before stage four, they very well can recover quickly and live very full, productive lives. So, this year's campaign builds on that message and encourages individuals to give voice to what it really means to live at stages one, two, three, and four. And this campaign is meant to help remove the shame and stigma of speaking out, so that more people can be comfortable coming out of the shadows and seeking the help that they need. I would like to introduce you to somebody that will share a little bit of their story with you. Michael Lane is an employee of NorCal Mental Health America, and is working as the Consumer Liaison in the Adult System of Care. And he would like to share his perspective very briefly with you this morning. Thank you, Michael.
Hello, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. I'm pleased to be with you. I'd like to briefly share some of my personal experiences in keeping with the theme. In 1998, I was 18 years old. I became homeless in Placer County due to a debilitating mental illness. I tried to cope by going up to the mountains, living around Dunner Subent and the Pacific Crest Trail for a while. As it got colder, I moved down to Colfax, then to Auburn. I was alone and homeless, undiagnosed and untreated. It doesn't have to be this way. I've experienced serious mental health challenges since I was a child. Some people wonder what that feels like. It seems impossible to fully describe, really. But I can make a beginning attempt, at least from my own experience. From the inside, mental illness feels like a terrifyingly endless pit. Year after year, escape feels utterly impossible. Decades can go by, stuck alone in the dark and the cold, afraid, really, really afraid. Just like in a cave, there were terrifying echoes, strange sounds of unknown origin, and little if any light. Meaningful human contact seemed always out of reach in the brightness above ground. For me, that lonely feeling of being lost in an impossibly deep cave is what mental illness feels like. I feel fortunate and blessed that I eventually received effective support and treatment. This helped make my recovery possible, so I could begin slowly climbing out of that cave. Difficult step by difficult step, I walked out into the light with wonderful support, both personal and professional. There is an entire marvelous world of experience in that little bit of my experience. It wasn't easy. The recovery is possible. It happened to me. I got better. Four years ago, I married a fantastic, beautiful woman, and we have two amazing children. I have a rewarding career, volunteering in the community and involved in the arts. My life is good. I like it. While one in four are affected personally, individually, directly, mental health matters for all of us. If you and I notice someone close to us isn't doing well, that they may be stuck in their own dark cave, we could start a conversation. You and I may be the first glimmer of light someone has experienced in a long, long, long time. We won't worry about saying exactly the right things. We know to ask questions and listen. There are many opportunities for prevention in our community, including in the schools and in families. There are many ways to get professional help, psychiatrists, psychologists, social workers, nurses, peer supporters, and others. It can all be wonderful, even necessary sometimes. But everyone can be aware, everyone can say something. Everyone knows that mental health matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, you have a bag up at your stance. I gave them to everybody. You have one scarf, and everybody else has green ties and ribbons, pins. And then, really more importantly, you have some educational material. We have some new material this year that is really four pages that really describe in plain English some of what Michael was talking about, in terms of what does mental health feel like, what can we do about it, what can supporters do about it. So, we really hope that you take that material and use it, and we will have much more of it to distribute. So, we are asking the board to join the conversation and raise awareness about mental health by proclaiming May as Mental Health Matters Month in Placer County, and encouraging all of our residents to pay attention to their mental health, get screened before stage four, and speak up about what mental illness feels like today. So, I thank you for doing the proclamation.
Thank you, Maureen. Any questions or comments from board members? Anyone from the public like to address this?
Keep up the good work.
Yep. And thanks again for another great presentation and opportunity to educate us, as well as the public, on this issue. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We actually have a proclamation.
Yes, we just have a motion and second. So, it's moved and seconded to approve the proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll now take up our 9:30 timed item, Public Works and Facilities, Granite Bay Parks Trails Open Space Assessment District Assessment Increase. Andy.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andy Fisher, Placer County Parks and Grounds Division. The action requested before you today is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the Engineers Report confirming the assessment boundary diagram and assessment, and ordering a levy of assessments for fiscal year 2016-17 for the Granite Bay Parks Trails and Open Space Assessment District that would increase the assessment by $2.30 to $79.08 per benefit unit. The subject district is a lighting and landscape district that was approved by the voters of Granite Bay in November 2001. It represents just over 8,000 parcels, and it is an assessment that shows up on the annual property tax bill as a supplemental. The purpose of the assessments generated by this district is to pay for development, operation, and maintenance of eight public parks, 30 miles of multipurpose trails, and 20 miles of bikeways in the Granite Bay community. The assessment district allows for an annual cost of living increase not to exceed 3%. That's based on the Bay Area Consumer Price Index, which for calendar year 2015 was just over 3%. So, the recommendation before you is to raise the assessment by 3%. That would equal $2.30. It would take the current assessment from $76.78 in the current fiscal year to $79.08 in 2016-17. The total budget for all those facilities is $723,000, of which 90% is paid for by the assessments that come in through this district. An additional 10% representing the general benefit comes from general fund and other fees and interest. There is a three-part process to enacting the annual cost of living and setting the new assessment, two of which you have already taken. The first, on February 9, you passed a resolution directing the preparation of the Engineers Report that undergirds the budget and assessment. And on April 19, you passed a resolution of intent to levy the adjusted assessment for fiscal year 2016-17. And then, today's hearing would be the third and final part of that process that would enact the assessment. So, with that, I will turn it back to your board.
Thanks, Andy. Any questions, comments by board members at this time? Seen none. This is a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing to anyone from the public who'd like to address this item. Seen no one, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. Moved and seconded to approve the Engineers Report confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering levy of the assessment for 2016-17 for the Granite Bay Parks and Trail Open Space Assessment District. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Andy. Next, take up our 9:40.
More people coming on rides?
Oh. So, what was the other one?
The rescue mission item. So, that was 7B.
Okay, we'll now take up 7B, so that some people can be relieved of sitting through our lengthy meeting, which is Placer Rescue Mission Site Access Agreement. And Lori is going to present this. There she is.
Good morning, Chairman of the Board.
Morning.
Board of Supervisors. I'm Lori Morris. I'm the Property Manager for the Department of Public Works and Facility Services. Today, I'm seeking approval of the non-exclusive Site Access Agreement with the nonprofit organization Placer Rescue Mission, to grant access to the county-owned property located in unincorporated Placer County at 4242 Cincinnati Avenue in Rockland, California. The agreement will provide up to $44,000 of county funding towards professional services needed to perform investigations and site feasibility study. This request is in response to a proposal from the Placer Rescue Mission requesting county support and funding to investigate the feasibility of a potential phase development for homeless individuals. Its initial phase would comprise of a 75-bed emergency shelter, a 96-unit supportive housing complex, and a 10,000-square-foot one-stop center to co-locate homeless service providers. The Sunset Industrial Ponds is 26.4 acres. It was used for septic ponds and industrial waste ponds until 1986, when the city of Roseville began providing sewer service to this area. Since then, the septic ponds have been subject to oversight by the Regional Water Quality Board, which require closure of these ponds and continued groundwater monitoring program. The closed industrial ponds are not regulated. Therefore, a 12-acre site has been identified for the investigation to be requested from your board by the Placer Rescue Mission. The Placer Rescue Mission's proposal is consistent with Marbit Consulting's recommendations intended to address the needs of homeless individuals in Placer County. The initiation of planning for this proposed project is also consistent with your board's direction to review potential housing and homeless shelter sites on a whole county or regional basis, including evaluation of sites in eastern Placer, the Auburn area, and south Placer. Due to unknowns about the property's development capacity, site inspections, testing, and studies are needed to determine if the site could accommodate the proposed project. Since the studies can be used by the county to consider other potential development options and provide key information needed for consideration of Placer Rescue Mission's proposal, staff believes it is appropriate for the county to provide the requested funding for the feasibility study. The proposed non-exclusive Site Access Agreement provides a two-year term to the Placer Rescue Mission to perform their site investigation, studies, tours, site visits associated with its due diligence and fundraising activities, while reserving the rights for the county to use the property by other users during the term. This agreement is just an initial step to perform project feasibility and does not provide the Rescue Mission any right to represent the county or to apply for any entitlements or environmental review that would be necessary to proceed with the proposed project. As stated earlier, the proposed agreement provides up to $44,000 to reimburse the Placer Rescue Mission, who will procure consultants, professional engineering firm, and consultants to perform the site feasibility study. The work will determine development constraints, provide programming and site layout concepts, and develop an opinion of development costs for the proposed project. The site feasibility is to be complete within six months of the agreement's commencement. There is anticipated additional county costs associated with managing this agreement and additional collaboration with community stakeholders and the South Placer Work Group. Staff will return with recommendations developed through its coordination with the Work Group and other community groups and the results of this study. In conclusion, staff recommends that your board approve the proposed non-exclusive Site Access Agreement. This would be the first step of a rigorous process to determine if the property would be suitable for the proposed development and the first steps towards a long-term approach to address homelessness in Placer County. Attending today's meeting is Brooke Stevens, the Board President of Placer Rescue Mission, and Jeff Brown, Director of Health and Human Services. We are here to answer any questions from your board. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Any question or comments from board members? Seen none?
Yeah, this is a culmination of several years of investigation and discussion in western Placer. And I'm really happy, Lori, that you brought this forward. It's been a work in progress for some time. I would like to ask Brooke Stevens to come up and introduce herself and give us a little bit of background on the Placer Rescue Mission folks and what you plan to try to accomplish here.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Brooke Stevens, and I'm Board President for Placer Rescue Mission. Placer Rescue Mission is a faith-based organization, a nonprofit aimed at transforming lives and ending homelessness. At Placer Rescue Mission, we see each individual as a spiritual person worthy of dignity and worthy of assistance in life's journey. We desire to see individuals set free from addictions, mental illness, and homelessness, and transformed by God to become physically and spiritually healthy and equipped to participate in society, sustain housing, and encouraged to create relationships of love and service to others. We want to see people achieve their own best possible potential. For some, that means temporarily using our services and then moving on. And then, for others, it may mean remaining there permanently. To achieve this, our mission is to develop supportive housing with integrated critical services placed into a single multi-service campus setting. We plan to tackle the root cause of homelessness by providing long-term housing, shelter, food, and clothing to the homeless. This campus will succeed because it will be a coalition of nonprofits, churches, businesses, and government agencies partnering together to provide a variety of critical services, such as job training, mental health services, substance abuse treatment, medical care, and case management. Placer Rescue Mission will develop up to 192 studio apartments, each with living, dining, and sleeping space, as well as kitchen and a bathroom. Beyond the transformation of lives, this campus has the potential to save Placer County millions of dollars annually. The average homeless person costs the county $40,000 annually. So, if we have 192 people at our campus, at $40,000 per year, that comes to $7.68 million. Placer Rescue Mission's estimated operational budget is $2.7 million annually. So, by placing those 192 people on our campus, the county will save almost $5 million per year. We believe this campus is the answer and the long-term solution to end homelessness in Placer County. So, before I would go, I would like to express Placer Rescue Mission's deep appreciation for Supervisor Duran, for all the help and guidance that he's given us. And we just want to thank the Board of Supervisors for giving us this opportunity. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Steve Lamb of Cartwright Engineering to discuss work on the project. like to introduce Steve Lamb of Cartwright Engineering to discuss work on the project.
Chairman, Board, Steve Lamb, Cartwright Engineers. I'm here to discuss a little bit about what we're setting out to do and the purpose of our feasibility study. As most of you may know, it was a septic pond, so there's quite a bit of terrain out there that's not usable for current development. So what we're looking at is trying to make discoveries on behalf and for the county of what's good out there and what's not good out there. We're going to conduct habitat studies, Phase One environmental assessments, topographic surveys, and check out the utilities that have been brought in to see what it would take to make this a development site. So with your help and assistance, we're going to proceed with that development and hopefully bring back to you a feasible site for our program, if not other programs, in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who'd like to address this item? Seen none. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and action. Jack, Jim, and then Jennifer.
Yes, thank you again. Again, this is a part and parcel of what we have been discussing over the last several years, and most recently has been a recommendation of Dr. Marbut, who we hired for his expertise on this particular issue. And I look forward to moving forward on this. Thank you.
Jim.
I haven't seen a business plan. Lori, is there a business plan that tells us who's going to fund the construction of this operation? It seems like it's going to be pretty complex, and I don't know whether the city of Roseville is going to be involved or any other government agencies. Is this going to be something that's going to be looked to the county to build and support? Do we have any idea how that's all going to play out?
This is a two-year agreement, of which that during that time, in addition to the site feasibility work as described by Cartwright just now, it will also be the work of Placer Rescue Mission to do fundraising and development of partnerships in which to, I didn't develop such a plan to operate.
So there's no business plan in place?
Not, not that I've seen currently, no.
All right, thank you.
Jennifer.
Thank you, Lori, for the presentation, and I want to thank Supervisor Duran for his work on bringing this forward. And I really want to thank all of us at the board for the action that we took about a year and a half ago now in support of Dr. Marbut's report. I think this moves us toward the vision that he had laid out for us as a county and as a government entity. So I think, I think this is a good step in that direction. We can't let up on the other pieces as well, though. Getting to Supervisor Holmes' concerns, the thing that I think is important to me about this agreement that we're being asked to enter into today is at the end of it, we actually, as the county, will have some tangible information about if Placer Rescue Mission doesn't move forward on this site under their own volition, what could we do with it as a county with our own property and have a better understanding of the uses of that property for Placer County again, if Placer Rescue Mission doesn't pan out, doesn't come forward for whatever reason. I'm hopeful that Placer Rescue Mission will have a, you know, a terrific outcome on this and will do the necessary fundraising to bring this to fruition. In the conversations that I've had with some of the folks associated with them over the years, they've made it very clear that they really see this as a privately fundraised entity, in which the county would certainly be a partner, but we would not be certainly the main funding source by any stretch of the imagination, and certainly in some scenarios, not a funding source at all. So I'm hopeful that this will get us one of two great outcomes, either one with Placer Rescue Mission or one that at least gives the county a much better understanding of how we could potentially use that property in the future, since it is an asset that we already own. So those are just my comments on it. Chairman?
Jim.
If the project, if the site is determined to be contaminated and needs some remedial remediation, that's going to be the county's responsibility, since we own the property?
Well, there has been testing done of the industrial pond area. We just completed last December a investigation by, I have it written here, Allied Engineering Group, who did the soil sampling, did not come up with any heightened levels of materials in the soils for their investigation. And then there's also groundwater monitoring wells surrounding the site related to the septic ponds. Those are, we're seeking closure of those wells at this time with the regional board, so things are appearing favorable as far as groundwater or soils.
How long before you think the State Water Quality Control Board will allow those?
The, for the request?
Yeah.
The request went out in the end of the year, so we're just waiting for their response. I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that.
All right, thank you.
And Jack?
Yeah, I was just going to comment. In addition to the water, there, one of the challenges out there with that particular site is, is the, there may be a requirement for fill, and we have to determine a specific amount of fill and where we would, where we would get that. So that's, that's pretty much the major, at least hurdle that the group sees right now, so.
Okay, and before we take action, I'll just add that emphasize encouragement to staff to make sure we do really good outreach with our city partners and make sure there's good communication amongst all of us, just for that purpose as a starting point, and then make sure we communicate all of that back to the board as, as necessary.
Pleasure of the board.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. We will now go back to our nine forty-five timed item, which is County Exec Emergency Services Sunset Industrial Area Community Facilities District Resolution to Annex Property Owned by Rockstone Properties LLC. Go on.
Good morning, Chairman. My name is John McElhany, Emergency Services Program Manager. The action requested today is that your board conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, tabulate ballots, and adopt a resolution to annex assessor's parcel number 017200010510, owned by Rockstone Properties LLC in the Community Facilities District 2012-1, the Sunset Industrial Area Services, and then apply the established charge for fire protection services and emergency medical services on each parcel within the said district. By way of background, in November 2012, your board approved the formation of Community Facilities District Number 2012-1 Sunset Industrial Area Services to fund ongoing fire protection and emergency services within the Sunset Industrial Area of unincorporated Placer County. CFD 2012-1 is intended to equitably spread costs of both fire protection and emergency medical services to new development within the SIA via special assessment on the property taxes of annexed parcels. In 2012, the maximum annual assessment was the greater of either eight cents per square foot of building space or $757 per acre. These unit rates were presented in 2012 dollars and subject to an annual inflationary adjustments for properties annexed into the CFD. Current 2016 rates are nine cents per square foot or $816.79 per acre, again, whichever is higher. This annexation is consistent with and supports board policy to support the cost of funding fire protection and emergency medical services equitably to development within the Sunset Industrial Area. By way of fiscal impact, this annexation meets Placer County's general plan, goals, and policies associated with the equitable portion of fire service costs within the SIA, and will allow for a graduated reduction in the general fund contribution to fire services within the SIA over time.
Thanks, John. Any questions of staff at this time? Okay, with that, this is a public hearing, so we will open up this item to the public. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? Seen none. I will close the public hearing. And now we need the ballot response.
One ballot was received from Rockstone Properties LLC, voting yes.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now jump to Department Item 9B, which is Consideration of Appointment of Ryan Rocco Assistant Recorder/Registrar, and we're going to jump to that in order to enhance employee productivity. Get, get some people back to work. So.
I think since we've taken this item out of order, I don't see Brian Hacker here, so I'll be happy to summarize the staff report. So it's my honor to recommend the appointment of Ryan to succeed Jim McCauley in light of Mr. McCauley's recent retirement. In accordance with the county charter, your board has the prerogative of appointing a replacement to serve out the balance of the unfinished term, and that would be through November 2018. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Brian has also arrived, so between the two of us, we'd be pleased to answer any questions the board may have.
Thanks, David. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to make sure that someone asked Ryan first if he really wanted the job.
Ryan, do you want this, John?
Fair question. Yes, I do, actually. Thank you very much, both of you.
And I, I knew that you would be interested, so.
Right.
Thank you.
If I may, I, I did have a couple of comments. I wasn't sure.
Now, this would be appropriate time.
I should probably not open up this conversation for any more questions, actually, but.
You probably shouldn't, but since you started down that, we're.
I guess I'm going to have to. So it's an honor to stand here before you today to be considered for this position of Placer County Clerk/Recorder. Since its inception in the 1850s, Placer County has had 19 county clerks. I've been working here nearly all of my adult life, but I didn't know all of them, despite what the rumor might be. I'd like to think, however, that they have established something here that we're building on even to this day, because our office enjoys a reputation of being fair, transparent, innovative, and customer-friendly. And if appointed by you today, obviously, I will continue those traditions and hopefully also bring some ideas along as well. We have opportunities, because of our lack of poll workers in our community, to maybe build some public-private partnerships with corporations, local businesses here in Placer County, to have them support us in a corporate poll worker program, an idea that I've talked about with, with members of the CEO's office, and I think that they're excited about this idea, where they can supply us with people and we can supply them for their generosity in some way. I want to move Placer County into the era of electronic recording of land title documents. And maybe, just maybe, we can talk about implementing this idea of fully reutilizing our elections' equipment to provide quicker results to the public on election night. And I'd like to thank David Bosch and your staff for this consideration of this nomination, and I stand ready now for probably questions that are going to come my way because of those comments. Thank you.
Any questions or comments by board members? Jack, then Jim.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think this is, we're moving in the right direction here. I've had, worked really well with your office at this time. I did want to clarify for the public that all, all we're being asked to is appoint to an existing elected office. We're not changing it from a elected office to an appointed office. I know I've gotten one or two calls on this. So I just wanted to let everyone know, we're just, this is just the appointment for a existing elective position. If there is going to be a discussion, that'll be fully vetted by the public in a later time.
Jim.
I just wondered if you were going to be able to have those voting results done
by next Tuesday?
It's three weeks.
Right. Sorry about that.
Yeah, three weeks on June 2nd.
Right.
And Kirk?
Well, having sat here 23 years ago, the last time this position was vacant and our board was asked to make an appointment, and our board selected Mr. McCauley, I think Mr. McCauley did right by our board over the years, most notably in his hiring and succession planning. And so I'm excited for this day and appreciate the number of years that you've put in in preparation for this moment.
Thank you.
Jennifer.
Yeah, I just, once I verified that you were actually interested, I figure you always have to ask, right?
It's a very good idea.
Yeah. I, I have been very impressed working with you over the past seven and a half years. Obviously, most of my contact has been with Mr. McCauley, but what I've, I've seen of you and your ability to work both with staff and the public has just been phenomenal, frankly. So I think you're going to be a really wonderful asset to Placer County, and I wish you success in 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections from my colleagues, I'd like to move approval of the item.
Second.
I would want the item to be a little more specific, the motion to appoint Ryan.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board appoint Ryan Rocco as the acting Placer County Clerk/Recorder/Register voters.
And he will be the clerk recorder as the acting, serve the unexpired term.
To serve out the term of Mr. McCauley. Anything else, attorney, that you'd like to get in there?
No, I think we've got it all on the record.
Attorneys know how to ruin moments, don't they?
I think we've got it on the record now.
Okay, I want Ryan and Jim's job. How's that work?
Summary.
Okay.
And we had a second there somewhere, but.
I apologize. I preempted a public comment. Didn't know if there was.
No, I know. Motion, you're second. No, I'm going to get there, though. Second, Holmes, and then I'm going to add my two cents and see if anyone in the public wants to try to dissuade us from our vote. But Ryan, it's been a real pleasure working with you as a candidate, as someone who's done voter outreach, even once getting the authority to conduct the marriage of my son. But your staff and you have always been extraordinarily helpful, even to my opponents, and so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Appreciate your commitment and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
And with that, is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this very volatile issue? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now that it's official, may I indulge your board just in a couple of thank yous? I know that we have other items, but I may not get this opportunity, again, it's such a public forum, to be able to say, "Thank you, God, for this blessing and this opportunity." Thank you to your board for your faith and your support. I really appreciate that. Thank you to my parents, Ray and Sally York, who sacrificed incredibly for me to have this opportunity today. Thank you, Lisa Kramer, Steve, and I, and the staff at the Clerk/Recorder Elections Office for their hard work for the people of Placer County. I want to thank my kids, Samantha and Jack, who remind me every day that my most important job is being their dad. And one final thank you to my mentor, my friend, Jim McCauley, for taking me under his wing and helping me to increase the strengths that I have as a person. So thank you to your board, and thank you, everyone. Thanks, Ryan. Thank you.
We will now pop back to Department Item 6A, Health and Human Services, Cal Works Welfare to Work Participant, Community College Foundation Contract Amendment.
Good morning. Again, this is, I'm Linda Patterson. I'm representing Human Services as the Director. I'm here today to ask your board to approve a second amendment to our contract with the Community College Foundation to cover the increased paid work experience and paid internship placements for Cal Works Welfare to Work participants. We began working with the Community College Foundation in 2013, and it's been a very good partnership. We have, what we're here to request also is that we increase the total contract amount from $388,016 to $581,226 for the period July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. We'd also like to request that your board approve a contract with the Community College Foundation for Cal Works for the paid internship placements from July 2016 to 2017 in the amount of $617,934, and authorize the Director to sign this contract and approve subsequent amendments up to 10% of the contract amount. First thing I'd like to say is that this contract is 100% state and federal funded. We do have money in our budget for 1516 to cover this increase, as well as funding in our 1617 budget to also cover these costs. And we have, we've And we have, we've derived a lot of benefits from these, this partnership that I'd like to discuss a little bit. To give you some background, for welfare-to-work participants, for many years, the state had had a, kind of some exemptions for getting them into our work programs, which the legislature recently sunsetted, and required counties to establish plans to reengage these participants. And we've jumped right into that, and we've had some good success working with the Community College Foundation. You know, working with them does help provide the services in a way that doesn't duplicate efforts and draws on their experience. To give you just a little bit of background, what we do, we use this kind of funding in three different ways. For traditional wage subs, did I lose my cutoff? To the traditional wage subsidies to employers who hire participants that are most job-ready, for paid work experience, which we call WECs, that provides 100% wage reimbursement to employers who hire participants who may need short-term or experience to become more job-ready. Also, paid internships and training that provide 100% wage subsidy and reimbursement to employers who hire students so that they may gain work experience in their field of study. So due to the experience, the success of this project, we have been able to increase the participation, and the placement rates have exceeded our expectations. In 2014-15, we had 135 participants that were placed in jobs with an average of around $9 an hour. In 1516, through March 28th, we had 185 participants who have participated with an average of $9.44 per hour. And in 1516, of the 137 new participants who have begun work experience, 77 of those, or 56%, have become employed, while 27% are continuing in their paid WECs placements presently. So we are having some good success in moving people into jobs. We are projecting in 1617 that we will move 195 participants into jobs with an average of $10, a little over $10 per hour. So we think that this wage subsidy program has been a win-win for both employers and for our participants alike. Employers have been able to hire employees to help sustain their businesses that otherwise they couldn't afford, especially during difficult times, and participants have access to jobs that they might not have had otherwise. I know we had an event in November that Supervisor Montgomery attended, and I think we honored our employers that have taken on these people, and I think you got a good chance to see the success and differences made for the families who have gained employment. And I think, so we want to really continue this. We continue to ramp it up. One example we did recently is we used some of these people, we trained them in how to process tax refunds, and they did tax refunds for free for a lot of our low-income and seniors that came in, and we managed to prepare 180 tax returns for a total of $210,000 in state and federal tax returns, bringing money back into our county. And the two of the people that we trained in that immediately got jobs, and the other two are not far behind them. So I think that this has been a beneficial partnership and a contract that we'd like to, you know, continue and enhance. So I appreciate your support in this.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members at this time? I see none. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? I'll only offer congratulations, good work, and look forward to hearing results from next year as well.
Thank you.
Pleasure of the board. Moved in second to approve the second amendment to the first contract, and they approved the contract, the second contract just discussed. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
He will now take up Item 6B, which is inmate healthcare services contract with California Forensic Medical Group, Inc. Maureen?
Good morning again. I'm here again, and also with Jeff Kane from the probation department, the juvenile detention facility, and Dave Powers from the Sheriff's Department and the Placer County Jail. So we're here asking your approval for the 1617 agreement with the California Forensic Medical Group, known as CFMG, in the amount of $5,825,362, to plus a per diem rate of $5, with no net county cost for this particular contract. Inmate healthcare services is mandated and required for Placer County Jail and juvenile detention facilities, and those services include primary care, dental care, pharmaceuticals, mental health services, acute care for the hospital, and specialty care to the current population of approximately 700 adult inmates and 20 wards in the juvenile detention facility. The contract provides for a base rate of 640, but additional inmates can be, receive services with the $5 per diem rate, which is assessed on a quarterly basis, based on actual census of the two combined populations. The new contract does have an increase of $312,263 for necessary increases in three areas, staffing augmentations in three areas, nursing, mental health, and dental services. In addition to that, there is an agreed-upon CPI that is the same index we've used for many years, West Urban Medical Care Consumer Price Index, and that amount this year was 3.7. So that increase was an additional $197,219. Those are the only two increases from prior year. CFMG has been a long-term performing, a long-term, high-performing contractor in Placer County, as evidenced by their demonstrated ability in running the program and success in obtaining and retaining the Institute for Medical Quality Certification for the jail. Risk management concurs that this contract shifts risk to the provider. It is a capitated contract, so once they agree on this amount, that is what is used in terms of providing all necessary services for the inmates and wards. As I've discussed before, we have talked about the timing with procurement for doing an RFP for this service at some point, and procurement continues to advise us to wait until we actually have a stable number of particularly inmates on the adult side. When that number gets stable, then we will continue, we'll move forward to do an RFP and assure that we are competitively awarding this contract. But for now, this is the contract we are requesting for your approval. As I said, the contract amount is as identified, and we're estimating that the per diem amount at this time is estimated at $75,000 for the next fiscal year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Clearly, the Sheriff and probation departments are in support of this contract.
Any questions, board members? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Moved in second, we're gonna say Holmes' motion and Duran's second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item C is long-term psychiatric residential care contract with Crestwood Behavioral Health, Inc.
So this contract is for a two-year contract with Crestwood for mandated medically necessary services, mental health services for residents really in need of more long-term care. The two-year amount is $1,720,000, and there is a significant County General Fund contribution of $1,032,000. There is no medical reimbursable services at these types of facilities, so we use realignment and County General Fund to pay for them. These services are for very few people. We serve about 7,300 people in our continuum of adult mental health services each year, and this represents a very small percentage, approximately 21 people were served in these long-term facilities in the last year. These are people that are not able to return to the community, usually after they have an acute episode. They are conserved through our Public Guardians Office and need to be in a locked and secured service facility with treatment in order to return back to the community. Our goal is always to have them return back to the community as quickly as possible, and that time really varies depending on the person and what their challenges are. Crestwood has nine facilities, so we have a lot of options in terms of matching the person to the appropriate facility, and we have an outreach team that works with them to assure that they are engaged in looking at their goals so that they can return back to our community. So funding for this first contract is $344,000 in state funding and $516,000 in County General Fund. It's included in our proposed 1617 budget, and the remainder will be included in the following year's requested budget. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the board for action. Motion, Excuse me, Montgomery, second, Uller. Yeah, catch my breath there. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an intensive residential mental health services umbrella contract with group home providers.
Good morning, Chairman Mike, Board members, Mr. Bosch, Mr. Carden, Twyla Abrahamson, the Acting Director for the Children's System of Care, and I'm pleased to be here today presenting two items. The first is the intensive residential mental health services. CSOC is mandated by the State Department of Healthcare Services to provide a range of mental health services for children and youth. Some of these young people have such deep emotional trauma and behavioral mental health needs that around-the-clock, 24/7 services are required. These services are provided through residential treatment centers, 11 of which are listed in this umbrella contract. As you've heard in prior board items, Continue of Care Reform, AB 403, is anticipated to lessen the overall numbers of children statewide, who will require these residential services and lessen the time children and youth spend out of their communities. However, there is still a need for the program some of the time for very troubled youth, and these residential programs effectively served approximately 40 Placer youth last year. Placer County historically has had low rates of residential placements, less than 2% of all children, compared to statewide numbers of 10%. We are requesting that the board take the following action. Improve these annual intensive services contracts in the amount of $585,000, which is the same level of funding as last year. This includes federal and state funding of $509,000 with a required County General Fund match of $76,000, and the funding is included in the department's fiscal year 1617 proposed budget. We're also asking the board to approve the annual provider list and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to amend the list of providers, as long as amendments are reflected in next year's annual list, sign provider contracts, and sign subsequent amendments. Thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public, pleasure of the board.
Second.
Motion, Uller, second, Montgomery. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And Item E1, Community Outpatient Mental Health Services with same contractor.
Twyla Abrahamson again presenting for the Children and Adult System of Care. So in order to best meet the State Department of Healthcare Services mandate to provide a full range of mental health services, Placer County also employs a network of experienced private therapists, counselors, and psychologists, which allows us to provide these outpatient services in a variety of geographic locations throughout the county and allows our clients to have a choice of providers. Outpatient mental health services are less costly than more intensive services, and having these providers readily accessible allows less stigma and trauma than hospital residential service. Currently, 64 practitioners are under this umbrella agreement, and they typically deliver services to approximately 500 children, youth, and adults each year, again resulting in better outcomes for individuals and families as they are kept stable at home and in their communities. The amount requested this year is a 7% decrease from last year, and an almost 20% decrease overall in the past two years. This decrease is primarily due to managed healthcare plans becoming operational in Placer County and starting to serve the mental health needs of those with less serious challenges. We're requesting the following action: that the board approve this annual provider agreement in the amount of $650,000, which includes $546,000 in state and federal funding and $104,000 in required County General Fund match. The funding has been included in the department's 1617 fiscal year proposed budget, and we're also asking that the board approve the annual provider list, authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to amend the list of providers, again, as long as the amendments are reflected in next year's annual list, and to execute the provider agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, board members? Seeing none, anyone from the public? Pleasure of the board.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the item. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gonna jump down now to Item 9A, Placer Ranch Consultant Services Agreement with McKay and Saump Civil Engineers.
Good morning, Michelle Kingsbury with the CEO's office. I'll keep this brief. This item before you today is seeking your approval to enter into a consultant services agreement with McKay and Saump Civil Engineers to support the Placer Ranch specific plan proposed project. The maximum contract amount is $1,271,140, and that amount does include a 10% contingency. The purpose of the agreement is for us to proceed forward to update the technical studies that will help inform the environmental document that will need to be prepared for this proposed project, as well as to finish and update specific plan design guidelines and development standards for the Placer Ranch specific plan project. This contract, coupled with the sewer alternatives analysis that was approved under your consent agenda, will help push forward activities and support the overall objectives of promoting the Sunset Industrial Area and the area plan update that's underway right now. Funding for this contract is available in the fiscal year 2015-16 budget under the community and agency support appropriation. With that, conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Jack?
Yes, Michelle, I want to thank you for bringing this item forward. This is the third item in two months that we've brought forward to the board supervisors on this particular project. I just want to thank you, because that demonstrates, or at least gets us to our commitment to this project and making sure that we get it done in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Seeing other questions, comments at this time? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
Michael Garibedian, speaking for myself. There's a large cost here, a number of questions that I hope we'll be able to find answers to. The, this general fund expenditure situation, when we're, when there are communities now that don't have adequate services, like fire service. The county taking on a developer role interests and concerns us. You know, are there other examples, and do you have track record on this, the county for this kind of activity? And how do you ensure independent review when you have a contract over the contractor and dealing with them and that, and then they're coming before county agencies? What is the CEO's role? What are, how is this managed? Maybe there's a way you do this customarily. I don't know. The market doesn't seem to support this, so is there a feasibility study for the counties getting involved in this? The lack of developer interest seems to be negative about that, but we need to know. And what if it doesn't develop? How does this play out? What is the return to the taxpayers when, or if there's no return to the taxpayers? The campus, the CSUS campus, is that, there a feasibility study for that? Is that, how is that gonna be paid for? Is it bonding or what? So these are questions that seem to us need to be answered before this goes forward. And to mention, the recycled water master plan, just to give you some concerns about that, the use of recycled water on public lawns or on school lawns is problematic. The sewer plants and the purple pipes generate antibiotic-resistant organisms, so we need to be cautious about that use on playing field. And also irrigation runoff from recycled water is hard to manage. Roseville, Santa Rosa has had a lot of problems with that. This means material, stuff in the recycled water from the sewer treatment plants, endocrine disruptors, for instance, and other kinds of unregulated chemicals are a problem. So there are a lot of issues on this, and we think it's not clear that there's been attention to them. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as background for you and the public, also, this is the second time the board actually discussed this particular item in detail, so there was a lot of discussion, conceptually, philosophically, policy, and was given direction to the staff to bring back the recommendation that's in front of us today. And with that, then, Michelle, if there are any of the other technical questions that you heard that you might want to address, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Do my best. Certainly with the project and the objectives that we've previously discussed, it supports the efforts of the Sunset Industrial Area and its investment in that area to bring backbone infrastructure, in particular, to the Sunset area. We're looking for a specific plan fee or some type of reimbursement mechanism that we would group our cost over time that we're investing here. In terms of return to taxpayers, the overall investment, the lack of infrastructure out in the Sunset Industrial Area has been noted for several years now as one of the biggest impediments to development out there. And certainly as we proceed forward, acting more in a developer role with this project, it will bring forward an opportunity to get the infrastructure over Highway 65 to support Sunset. In terms of kind of the roles, certainly this. In terms of kind of the roles, certainly this project will be subject to a full vetting through our normal planning process. There'll be an EIR done, specific plan documents, and so there'll be that public process as well as vetting process that will be done with this project, no different than any other project. Going through the list, with the CSU SAC State Campus, it's an independent development that we're not a party to, nor subject to any investment, or have not been requested to do anything for that 300-acre campus that's planned out there. It's an individual project. In terms of the recycle water plan, certainly that'll be updated and prepared. We'll work with PCWA as well as our Facility Services Division, working through the technical aspects of that recycle water plan as well. Hopefully that answers all the questions. Happy to answer anything else.
Thanks, Michelle. Jack.
Yeah, I was just going to add that in addition to the regular, you know, process that we go through, it has been requested by area jurisdictions and cities that they want to participate as well in, be at the table as to how this thing rolls out. So we'll have that piece in order to make it a project that is acceptable and support, fully supported by area, local governments.
Thank you.
Jennifer.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, for anyone who's not familiar with the site or the Placer County Conservation Plan, that this is fully consistent with the Placer County Conservation Plan and is in an area that has been identified as an area to develop so that we can protect and conserve other areas. And so I think the vision of this board, at least, and previous boards, and probably future boards, is pretty consistent in that messaging and that approach that we're taking.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action. Moved in second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We will now jump back up to Item 7A, which is a bridge replacement project on Dowd Road over Coon Creek.
Morning, board members, Mr. Chairman. This morning, I am asking you to adopt a resolution to approve the award of contract number 947 with Mark Thomas and Company in an amount not to exceed $555,175 for professional engineering services for the bridge replacement project on Dowd Road at Coon Creek, and asking you also to authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities or designee to execute subsequent contract amendments up to 10% of the contract amount as needed. So this bridge is pretty old. It's nearing the end of its useful life. It's got some structural and geometric issues, and this contract is what we need to finish the final design to try to get it. Our goal is to be in construction in 2018. And so this contract was advertised using an RFP that was developed jointly with Procurement Services, and we received four proposals, and Mark Thomas was the highest-ranked consultant. The contract and the project is being funded by 88.53% with federal aid highway bridge program, and then the remaining is funded with our own local road funds. So with that, just open it up to questions.
Just one question, since you're here and since it's my district.
Yes.
Reaching back, the quick background, a lot of the bridges out on the west side, Valley Floor, District 2, were deemed by the state to be inadequate.
Right.
And we've had great success, so compliments with the Federal Bridge Replacement Program. Early on, though, there was concern, and we strategically changed the sequence of the bridge replacement construction because we realized we were going to landlock some people that had needs with agricultural businesses. So with all of that, just for the public, and I know, when do you expect construction on this bridge to be finished, I guess is the key question.
Yeah, this one would be, right, it's the summer of 2018, and so that one, too, we would be closing the road. But I know, you know, I think the concerns were if we were doing multiple, I think, projects at one time.
Right, right.
And that, and so Dowd Road at Markham Ravine, which is the other Dowd Road Bridge, we replaced the Yankee Slue one last summer, and then Markham Ravine we're hoping to do in '17. So that one should be done by the time we get to this one. The Brewer Road Bridges are all done. So I think, I think we're okay. We always double-check that, too.
Appreciate it.
So it's definitely a concern, but.
Thank you.
Should be okay.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, pleasure of the board. Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now, Item 8A, Booking and Jail Services Agreement with Nevada County Sheriff's Office. Mark.
Good morning, Chairman Wiegand, members of the board, Mr. Bosch, Mark Jackman, Placer County Sheriff's Office. I'm joined by Captain Dennis Walsh, our Tahoe substation commander. We're here this morning to seek your approval of an agreement between Placer County Sheriff's Office and Nevada County Sheriff's Office for jail and booking services in the amount of $420,961. This is for a one-year term, beginning July 1st, 2016, through June 30th, 2017. Before I turn it over to Captain Walsh to answer any questions operationally, I would like to point out to your board, this contract was originally done back in, I believe, the early 2000s. It was done for one year, and we've renewed it subsequently for two years, every two years, for the last, I think, six years it's been. There is nothing substantively different in this contract than the original contract. It's for the exact same services. We've gone through increases every year. We just kind of, in talking with county council, we figured it was a pretty old contract. We wanted to tighten up the language a little bit. So it is a new contract, it's for a new one-year term with the option to renew annually, which we'll likely do with your board's pleasure as we move forward. But I did want you to understand, this is a new contract, not the one from the early 2000s. Nothing substantively has changed within the scope of services. With that, we'll turn it over to your board for any questions.
Thanks. Any question, board members? Jack.
Yeah, when you, when you say, and this is more to Jerry, when he says that it automatically renews, is this something that we can just put on our consent agenda as opposed to having them come in here? How does that, how does that work?
Yeah, if the board chooses to do that, but it is slightly over the consent.
It is.
Item, and I have heard that the board might be looking at modifying that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments, board members? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the board. Moved in second to approve the item. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And also, Jail Management System Contract with Tribe Bridge Holdings of Tampa, Florida.
Members of the board, Mr. Bosch, Chairman of the Board, Wiegand, Mark Jackman, again with Placer County Sheriff's Office. I am now joined by Jerry Silva, who is our IT Manager in the Sheriff's Office. We're here today to seek your approval of a contract with Tribe Bridge Holdings, LLC of Tampa, Florida, for new jail management system, excuse me, in the amount of $1,691,404. Additionally, we're seeking your approval to increase an existing BPO with tech systems for technical support by $95,000 for a calendar year amount of $135,000, authorize a one-year approval of the same BPO with tech systems, and then to get your approval for the purchasing manager to sign all of the related documents. So with that, any questions? Jerry Silva is here to answer any of the technical questions of what this system can do that our existing Tiburon system cannot do. But before I turn it over to Jerry, this is, this is the first step of our entire criminal justice system. So we're now replacing the JMS Jail Management System. We can get into the funding technicalities of this. We have, there was $1.1 million in our budget this year for the failed New World Project. The first portion of this, approximately $480,000, I think, in the existing fiscal year with your board's approval, we'll use $480,000 of that $1.1 million. We will then request to roll over the remainder, and then the balance of this contract with tech systems and all of the implementation, the training, everything that goes with it, is part of our proposed budget that I think you're going to hear about on June 7th. So hasn't technically been approved yet, but it is included in the proposed budget that will come forward.
Thanks. Any questions or comments, Jack?
Yeah, I noticed that it says that the system manages incident tracking, inmate hearing processes, and discipline tracking. Does it also calculate good time days, you know, for sentencing?
It does, yes.
It does, okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action. Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. The board will now adjourn to closed session.
The board is adjourned to closed session to have a conference with legal counsel to discuss two items of anticipated litigation, one for initiation of litigation and one for The board has returned from closed session at a conference with legal counsel on a matter of anticipated litigation. The board heard a report from counsel on initiation of litigation and gave direction. The board then heard a report on an item of significant exposure to litigation and gave direction to counsel. No action was taken. That concludes the closed session report.